Okay, all right, 6:31, time to call the special meeting door. Everyone please stand for a pledge of allegiance.
My allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Sherman.
Here.
Mr. Duffy.
Here.
Grant.
Here.
The Boo.
Here.
The Adams.
This charges a absent client due to a scheduling conflict. Mr. Casson, for your shores.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't realize this was going to be considered. Thank you. We're here for a meeting notice. With respect to a charge brought under section 4, entry 02 of Nelsonville City Charter. I'm Patrick Casson. I'm acting as the special prosecutor here today. I'm going to start out by asking you to swear in Corey Taylor, please.
Mr. Taylor, would you please raise your right hand? Swear to tell the whole truth. Think about the truth to help you go.
I do.
Excuse me, Mr. Casson.
Here.
Prior to today's meeting, I sent an email to you explaining difficulties we had at the glass meeting regarding conversations between me and my client being overheard because of the inability, the silenced microphones that were picking up our conversations. Asked if there was something we could do to remedy that. Do you have anything to remedy that?
Sure. Can you talk to your client, just ask for a break and go on a hallway talk?
Okay, thank you.
Read your item of note like you would do in federal court. If it's simple, simple. All right. Corey, can you tell us your full name and form?
Corey Ward Taylor.
Where do you live?
556 Marion Street, Nelsonville, Ohio 45764.
How long you lived down here?
Lived in Nelsonville since 1995, that residence since 2000. Since 2000.
You work in a community?
I do.
And what do you, how long you work in a community?
I've worked in Nelsonville around, ever since 2000.
Where you work now?
I manage some rentals here in Nelsonville, and I work in a glass plant below.
Record will contain a charge that was filed. Why, you recall that?
I did.
What do you recall you filed?
A charge that Mr. Smith does not maintain continuous residency in the city of Nelsonville.
And my understanding is that you believe that somewhat of an open secret in the community for a bit, is that right?
Objection.
Yes. And would you, uh, would you feel that he should maintain residency here?
I absolutely believe he should.
Excuse me, Mr. Duffy, I
Do you think that-
I articulated an objection.
Okay, upheld.
Thank you.
Well, you upheld the objection, he's got to give a basis for it. What's your reason for it?
Leading.
There's no rule of this law. Evidence here.
Okay.
All right. Do you think your legislatures in the community ought to have some skin in the game by residing here?
Absolutely.
Have you gathered some documents that you think bear upon your opinion that Mr. Smith is not residing in the community in which he serves?
Uh-huh.
Okay. I'm just going to kind of mark through it really quick if I could. As I hand you these documents, I'm going to ask that you take your top copy, which is numbered, and pass a copy down to everybody, okay?
Okay.
I've given you what I've marked as exhibit one. Take a look at it, and once everybody else has a copy, tell us what it is.
This is a copy of a White Pages search showing Mr. Smith's address, and at this point, current address is 608 Elm Street, Bell Creek, Ohio 45714.
In your investigation, did you develop an understanding as to kind of the progression of addresses Mr. Smith has had outside of Nelsonville?
Yeah.
What's your understanding?
That he lived at this Bell Creek address for some time, and then is now living in Waterford, Ohio.
And the Yellow Pages resource which draws from various public records listed his current address to outside of Nelsonville, is that fair?
That is fair.
All right. I've given you what I've marked as exhibit two. Could you, uh, take your copy, pass it around, and then tell me when you're ready to talk about it?
Sure. This is a copy of two police reports taken, one by T.G. Fisk and one by Nathan and Brittany Tyson attesting that Mr. Smith does not live in Nelsonville.
Let's go to the second page, one by T.G. Fisk. Do you know T.G.?
Yes.
Okay. And my understanding is she basically indicates she lives at Mr. Smith's purported address in Nelsonville and never sees him there.
That's correct.
All right. Let's go to the third page. The voluntary statement form taken by the police of Nathan and Brittany Tyson, do you see that?
I do.
Tell me who those folks are.
Nathan Tyson is the son of Beth Tyson.
What's your understanding of the relationship between Beth Tyson and Mr. Smith?
My understanding is that they're, um, dating.
Okay.
With a girlfriend.
And this voluntary statement from these folks basically indicates that Mr. Smith moved in with Beth Tyson, his boyfriend and girlfriend, quite a while ago, is that fair?
That's correct.
All right. And these folks actually live in the same house with them, solid themselves, correct?
Correct.
I'm going to object to, I have a continuous objection, so I don't have to do it all the time. It's the leading questions regarding the documents, the document speak for themselves.
All right, let's go to Give you what I've marked as exhibit three. Pass it around to the folks and then talk about it.
This document is a sworn affidavit for T.G. Fisk.
Okay. And it generally indicates that she goes by the house up to 10 times a day, rarely sees Mr. Smith there, never pop anywhere, is that fair?
That's fair.
Take a look at exhibit four, pass it around, and tell me when you're ready to talk about it. And I apologize. Please swear again, we forgot to swear. You swear again before?
Before?
Yeah.
Yes.
My apologies. Recognize exhibit four?
I do.
Tell us what exhibit four is.
This is sworn affidavit, Brittany Tyson.
Consistent with the statements she gave to the police?
Correct.
All right, let's go through it just a little bit, okay? What does Brittany explain almost respective relationship to Beth Tyson in paragraph one?
That she's the daughter-in-law, married to Nathan Tyson, that's son.
And in paragraph two of the affidavit, what does Brittany explain the relationship between Beth Tyson and Greg Smith as?
They've been dating for several years.
And in paragraph three, does she discuss anything with respect to Mr. Smith's residence? Residence?
Yeah, it states that they first moved in together in Lowell, Ohio.
Okay. And roughly when?
2008 to 2010.
All right.
What she states.
And then in paragraph four, does she talk about anything with respect to their further relationship and residence location?
Yes, they moved, in 2010, they moved from Lowell to the Bell Creek address, and they were there until 2017.
That Bell Creek address, that 608 Elm Street Bell Creek address, is that the same address that is contained on exhibit one?
It is.
White Pages, okay. And in page five, does Brittany explain how she might have knowledge of what what he was doing there with Mr. Tyson?
Yeah, it states that they were there for, they were living in the residence with them for 18 months. They paid rent when they stayed there. At the Bell Creek residence, just to be clear.
All right, and then in page six, or paragraph six of exhibit four, does Brittany explain where they then moved to?
She does, stating that after her grandfather had passed, they moved to his home at 1690 Clark Hill Road in Waterford, Ohio.
And with respect to paragraph seven, does Brittany explain the conversation she had with Mr. Smith that relate to his residency here in Nelsonville?
Yeah, say he comes to Nelsonville for a city council meeting.
Okay. Does it indicate whether or not, after he visits his residence on the city council meeting day, whether he stays there or not?
He does not stay the night stage for the day.
Are you aware as to the attempts to serve Mr. Smith with respect to these council proceedings and his removal?
I am.
And how many times have you had to serve him?
This was the third time before this proceeding.
All right. And in locating him to serve him, where were you able to locate him at?
First time he was served here in council chambers by Dan Sherman, fellow council member. The last two times he was served in Washington County at the Waterford address. Second serving was done by a Washington County Sheriff Officer. And the third serving was by Dan Sherman in Waterford.
The service for this meeting, what's your understanding of what occurred?
Mr. Sherman walked up to the house, opened the door, and he slammed the door in his face, and Dan put the put the serving on the vehicle in the driveway.
Correct. He saw Mr. Smith in the house. Mr. Smith refused to accept it, so he left it on the on the vehicle in the driveway.
That's correct.
Okay. Take a look at exhibit 14, pass it along, let's talk about it.
I'm sorry, what number did you say this is?
14.
14?
I just jumped around because it's a different book's number.
This is a sworn affidavit from Melanie R. Smith.
Who is that?
This is Greg's wife.
And how'd you come into possession of this?
His attorney presented it at, I believe, the first hearing.
This was presented by Mr. Smith to explain his living arrangement, is that fair?
I would, I mean, it was, I guess that's fair, I mean, it was served by his attorney, I don't know if that's speaking on his behalf or not.
That's fair. Miss Smith, anywhere in this affidavit, does it say that he's, Mr. Smith has continually resided at that residence?
No.
Do you find this affidavit somewhat odd in the language that he uses?
Absolutely.
Objection.
Do you find it somewhat evasive?
I do.
For example, she says Greg always and often returns to our home. Do you find it somewhat contradictory, always and often?
Objection.
Yes.
And then she says later, I'm sure that it is his intention to always return to our home. You see that?
I did.
Mr. Smith had an opportunity to present an affidavit from his wife to establish the continual residency in this community, correct?
He did.
Is there anything in this affidavit that suggests to you that from the way you understand continual residency that he has it?
There's nothing, I don't understand questions, turn, repeat.
Is there anything in this affidavit suggests to you that he lives at a residence in Nelsonville on a continuous basis?
No.
Correct. From your investigation, have you formed an opinion as to whether or not Mr. Smith lives in Nelsonville on a continued basis?
I have.
What's your opinion as to whether Mr. Smith continuously resides in Nelsonville over the past year?
He does not.
I saw that, thank you.
First of all, let's talk about exhibit 14. Do you believe that Melanie R. Smith was telling the truth in this affidavit?
I wouldn't know if she's telling the truth.
Do you believe that she was telling the truth in this affidavit?
Objection, ask an answer, you already indicated that he wouldn't know that.
It's taken, it's duly sworn, isn't it?
It does say duly sworn.
Okay. And a person who is sworn is obliged under law to tell the truth. Correct?
I would agree with you.
Is there any indication in this affidavit that Mr. Smith resides anywhere else?
No, there'd be no indication.
Does, um, city council have the power to subpoena witnesses that testified before this tribunal?
Objection, ask for a legal conclusion, he's not a lawyer.
You can answer, there's no rules of evidence here.
I defer my attorney on that one, I don't, I'm not a legal, I'm not a legal counsel.
Have you read the city charter?
I have.
Okay, does the city charter give city council the power to subpoena witnesses?
I do not recall.
Who's Clinton Stanley subpoenaed?
I'm not aware, I don't know.
The first hearing, okay, the first hearing, there's a record of that. Do you recall the first hearing?
I do.
Okay, do you recall whether or not Mr. Clinton Stanley was subpoenaed by council?
I recall Mr. Stanley being here. I don't remember, I don't recall if he was.
If he testified that he was subpoenaed, and it turns out he wasn't subpoenaed, would that be lying under oath?
Objection, ask for a legal conclusion.
Sustained.
How did you come by the affidavit, number four?
Exhibit four, is that where you raised it?
Exhibit four, yes.
I was taken by our attorney's office by special counsel.
Do you know what time it was taken? By your attorney's office?
I do not.
Well, your attorney's office wasn't hired to represent the prosecution of this matter until the resolution was passed on August 23rd, 2026, at approximately 7:05 PM, correct?
Assuming that's correct, you have the resolution from the U.S.
So, when were you provided this affidavit?
Objection, don't answer that, you asked my attorney, fine communications.
Sustained.
When you were provided this affidavit, at the time that you were provided, it became public record, are you aware of that?
I am aware of that.
Okay, so, as a matter of public record, when were you provided this affidavit?
I was provided this, prior to this meeting.
When?
5:30.
5:30 today?
Today.
Okay. And it being taken on August 23rd, 2021, if it was taken prior to 7:05 PM, then that was not be an attorney work product, would it?
Objection, ask for a legal conclusion. Sustained. He's not a lawyer.
Who else was here at 5:30 when you were presented this document?
Myself and my counsel.
So he gave it to you at 5:30, and no one else saw that?
That's correct.
How come you, did you ask Brittany Tyson to be here tonight?
I did not, no.
Yeah, approach.
Absolutely.
I've just handed you a packet of documents that are listed charge party list of exhibits for 1921, is that correct?
I would say that's correct.
Take a look at exhibit number 11.
Okay, give me a second, let me get that.
Do you see it?
I do, I was waiting for my attorney to give me that, I'm trying to get that, hold on. What is this, just so I can figure it out?
It's the general entry, change of plea to count two of the indictment sentencing for falsification of Brittany Tyson.
Okay.
Have you seen this document prior to today?
I don't recall seeing this. Unless you gave it in a prior packet.
Do you have any recollection that I provided this document to you on a prior occasion at a hearing regarding the removal of Mr. Smith?
I don't recall the specific document, but I'm assuming that it was in the last packet.
You're aware of the, um, the offense and the degree for which the data play was falsification from the front of the document, and M129211382, do you see that?
I do see that.
And if you look at the first non-sentencing document, which is captioned falsification, theft, offense to purchase firearm, the A2 section says the statement is made with the purpose to incriminate another.
Where are you at?
I'm at actually page seven of the exhibit, which is the page after page six of the sentencing order.
Is it actually part of that document?
Yes, it's part, it's part of exhibit number 11, it is not part of the, of the general entry.
Okay.
So falsification, M129211382, as you read it there, says the statement is made with the purpose to incriminate another, that's what she was convicted of as a felony, correct?
Objection, he's not a lawyer, he has no idea.
I don't even know what you're reading. Sustained, he's not a lawyer.
Did you investigate whether or not she was a credible witness?
I did not.
You did not?
I did not.
Okay. On your order giving notice to Mr. Smith, the letter of that notice, that was of the order that you had, we will turn to that exhibit three.
Your exhibit three or our exhibit four?
This is my exhibit three.
Okay, why don't we refer to them as charging parties exhibit?
Charging parties exhibit three. Says Corey Taylor, the charging official- Says Corey Taylor, the charging official has probable cause for your removal from office. What all did you have that constituted probable cause?
Uh, all the exhibits that were presented before you from our counsel.
Well, you didn't have the affidavit of Beth Tyson that was given on August 23rd, this was, this was served August 16th, correct? I'm sorry, Brittany Tyson.
So, I, I'm, what's the question, I don't understand what your question is.
All right, I'll rephrase. Corey Taylor, the charging official, has probable cause for your removal from office. What did you have on August 16th, 2021, that constituted probable cause for removal from office?
Now, Mr. Smith is not a continuous resident.
Now, that's your opinion, what evidence did you have?
I think the evidence has been pretty clear.
I want you to state the evidence that you had on August 16th, that Mr. Smith was in violation of Section 11OB of the city charter, according to your statement that you had probable cause.
Right. So we have searches that show an address not Nelsonville. Uh, we have statements made by Nathan and Brittany and Dee Dee Fisk, police record stating that he does not live in Nelsonville.
Okay, are you, are you talking about your exhibits that we just looked at here, exhibits two, three?
I believe that's evidence.
One, two, three, I'm sorry, one, two, four, and 14?
Objection, he held up what he had, he held up exhibit one, and he held up exhibit two of the statements.
He's like your witness testimony?
I'm just saying, for the record, for the record's clear, he held up exhibit one and he held up these statements that were exhibit two.
Exhibit number one. This document, where did it come from?
Uh, it came from whitepages.com.
Okay, and who, who researched this document, who printed this out?
I researched that document.
Okay, and are there any dates on this document that indicate when these residences were occupied?
Uh, does not appear to have any dates.
Do you recall at the second meeting that we had regarding Mr. Smith's removal that evidence was presented that a couple of these numbers were phone numbers for the union?
I don't recall them being numbers of the union, that you're saying that telephone numbers?
Yes, yes.
I don't recall them being numbers of the union, why would they be?
Did you ever call any of these numbers?
I did not call any of them.
So you can't testify from your own personal knowledge whose numbers these belong to by having actually called a number and saying, who is this?
I have not called them.
Exhibit number three.
Although I can testify to the fact that I do have Greg Smith's cell number, and it does match with on here. That was been provided to me over the years, but I serve with him on campus.
How long has he had that cell number?
I'm gonna say probably, as long as I know.
Have you, um, done any research to determine where that cell number comes back to?
I don't know.
Say again?
I have not.
Referring back to charge, charged, charging officials exhibit three on Keith Fisk.
So again, your, or ours, exhibit three?
Charging official. Did you personally talk to Ms. Fisk?
Or in regards to exhibit three?
Exhibit, regard to exhibit three, yes.
I did not.
Have you ever talked to Ms. Fisk regarding Mr. Smith?
I have.
And did you ever ask Ms. Smith to come in to be a witness for you?
Ms. Smith?
I'm sorry, Ms. Fisk.
I did not ask her to come in, no.
In her affidavit, she indicates at number five, based on my rare observations of Greg Smith at the house, I believe that Greg Smith's visits were there to see his daughter, do you see that?
I do.
Okay. Do you have personal knowledge of where Mr. Greg Smith's daughter was living in the last five years?
Uh, I do.
Okay, and where was she living?
The only place that I knew that she lived was, I don't know the name of the road actually, but I'm good up past Hat Cap Road, on the back side, Groves and Groves now.
It was not at 238 Adams Street, correct?
I don't know if she's ever resided there. I would not know that.
But you do know in the last five years she resided in an address on Groves and Street, correct?
Um, I would say it's probably been in the last five years, sure.
Okay, and so that would be inconsistent with Ms. Kit Fisk's affidavit that she believed that Smith's daughter resided there if it were within the last five years, correct?
Well, there's no dates or times on there, so I would, I I wouldn't draw that observation.
What, what dates and times do you glean from exhibit number three that apply to Mr. Smith's residency at 238 Adams Street?
As far as times, rare occasions, that's the only timeframe left.
Is there any time here that indicates the dates and times that Miss Fisk made these observations of Mr. Smith's residence at 238 Adams Street?
No. Ten times per day, that's it.
You live here in town, Mitch?
I do.
And you work out of town, right?
I currently do, not all the time, I work in town also.
What hours do you work?
Uh, I'm on a swing shift for the working out of town, and I work whenever needed as far as managing. I could be out called on the middle of the night for a budget issue.
So I could drive by your house five or 10 times a day at various times and not see you or your car or any trace of you at your residence, correct?
Sure, I mean, that's true for anyone, I guess.
So the fact that somebody drives by somebody's residence 10 times a day, by the way, there's no times here, she indicates when she's driving by, is there?
No.
So the fact that somebody drives by somebody's house 10 times a day, there's no indication they're not present, present in that house, is it?
Uh, I would say that's fair.
Do you find it odd regarding this affidavit that, um, Ms. Fisk has not testified that she observed garbage cans in front of the residence on garbage day?
No.
Do you find it odd that she test, she did not testify that she did not see garbage cans in front of the residence on garbage day?
No.
Would you agree with me that not seeing garbage cans on garbage day in front of a residence would be a good indication that the residence may not be occupied?
I don't understand the question, I would.
Sure, if somebody said, I've driven by there 10 times a day, and I've never seen a garbage can out in front of that residence, do you think that would be a, uh, good indication that the resident was vacant?
I still don't understand the question, I would never draw a conclusion, so I don't understand the question.
Did you investigate, I know you, you testified, um, regarding this particular affidavit for Mr. Casson. It says at number six, I've had no interactions with Greg Smith, that's a neighbor on Adams Street, do you see that?
I do.
What did you take that to mean?
Uh, we're our friends, we're our acquaintance, but.
She's never spoken to him, do you take it that way?
Could mean that, I don't know.
But she's never had?
There's no, there's no clear indication of intent in that, so I don't know what she's intending.
Do you have, do you take that to mean that she's never knocked on his door to see if he's there?
I, I would, again, I would know if she's knocked on his door and he wasn't there, and so therefore had no interaction, I don't, I would not know that.
And she lives almost three blocks away, correct?
She lives up into the road from Mrs. Smith, yes.
So he can come and go from their residence four or five times a day, and she'd never seen, correct?
Uh, potentially.
Now, she also says, only recently did I learn that Greg Smith's wife resided at 238 Adams Street full time, you see that?
Uh, which number is it?
That's number four.
Yep, I do see that.
Okay, now in exhibit number 14, the affidavit of Melanie Smith, she speaks about, we own and maintain our home at 238 Adams Street, Nelsonville, Ohio, do you see that?
Which paragraph?
That's paragraph two.
It does say that, correct?
And from past information, you are aware that Mr. Smith has claimed 238 Adams Street as his residence for purposes of voting, um, and the exhibits that we have already prepared as exhibit number eight for almost 20 years, correct?
So your exhibit number eight?
My exhibit number eight, charged parties exhibit number eight.
I understand you may have a voting registration here, but I couldn't test that he's actually voted for it. I wouldn't know that.
But that, that appears to be a document from the voter registration of Athens County Board of Elections, correct?
I'm sorry, it's sandwich, exhibit number six.
It's exhibit number eight.
Uh, it's kind of unclear, it's written, it's written on it, voting registration by, with a marker, but I'm actually looking for, where does it actually say?
About page, page two.
Okay. I'm gonna object, if you there's no foundation to establish that you would know if this was true or not, or if you didn't know what it is, you answered. On the second page, it does say Board of Elections.
Okay, and it also say other voters with the same address, Melanie R. Smith, do you see that?
I do.
Okay, now, this Fisk has driven by, according to her statement, past the home at 238 Adams Street up to 10 times a day where Melanie Fisk has resided, I'm sorry, Melanie Smith has resided, and she has never seen this Smith there, has she?
She doesn't specifically state that here, but I would know.
It says, only recently did I learn that Greg Smith's wife resided at 238 Adams Street full time. Uh, she believes that his daughter lived there, isn't, doesn't she?
She doesn't claim that she believed her daughter there, but I'm not gonna assume that she the first part of that, I'm not gonna assume that, that sounds like an assumption to me.
Did she, does she say that she saw his daughter at the house?
See on here where, just says that she believes Greg's daughter resided there. I'll see where it actually says, where she saw her or Greg's wife.
So she's never seen Greg's daughter at the house, but yet she believes that his daughter resided there?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, I'm not gonna assume anything.
But she, as the one person she does testify to, that she did have observation of at that residence is Greg Smith, isn't it?
She does.
Going back to exhibit number three, your notice to Mr. Smith, who actually authored this document?
Who authored this document?
Yes.
Objection, correct or not the answer, the only way he would know anything about that would be work product, so, and the.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, this, this document bears your signature, doesn't it?
It does.
Okay, where'd the language come from?
Objection, sustained. He's not gonna talk in our conversation.
You said anything about conversation with counsel?
I didn't.
Go on, counselor.
I didn't. We'll go take a break.
Okay, thank you. Five-minute recess, everyone use the bathroom? Five-minute recess, go.
Are you gonna put the Buckeyes game on?
Yeah, right, yeah, exactly.
Is it 8 o'clock yet? I don't have a card, they don't give us cards anymore.
Oh, yeah? Oh, yeah?
It was a Buckeyes game. Sounded like there was a party today, but I didn't know it was going to be.
I didn't even mean that one though. I didn't want to call it that.
Kind of opening up the house and big ones out for everyone.
Yes.
Yeah, that's the one. I was prepared that guy.
That was the house, the party. I remember.
It was all sent to be delivered and I just thought.
I'll be careful next time I go, because I'm on. I'm gonna search more. I wouldn't call it.
It'll be just three years.
Oh, what, like three years?
Yeah.
It was in my autumn summer. Yeah. Yeah, crazy aesthetic.
She made a lot of movies, so I don't give it either like you.
I remember, as soon as you said it, I remember her laugh that she.
Right, it's just easier to pick the, like, more appetizing of.
Okay. You ready to continue, sir?
Sure.
Okay. All right, we're back in session. Go ahead.
Let me call my last question when I asked you about who authored this document. There was an objection by Mr. Casson, correct?
There was.
Okay. He objected on the basis of what, got a, did he not?
He did.
Okay. Mr. Casson wasn't appointed as counsel in this matter to prosecute this matter until August 23rd, and this document is signed on 8/16/2021. Would you explain that?
Objection. That would require attorney-client privilege communication.
There's no attorney-client privilege before August 23rd. Are you, are you, are you aware that of Mr. Casson being your attorney in this matter of Mr. Smith's removal prior to August 23rd?
Objection. Sustained. He's not gonna talk about attorney-client communication privilege.
He's not talking about counsel.
Sustained. Let's move on, counselor.
What, what day did you, you got this document when?
I don't recall the exact date.
Did you sign it on August 16th?
I did.
Okay. And on August 16th, as a counsel person, had you contracted with Mr. Casson to be the attorney for counsel?
Objection. He's not gonna ask about attorney-client communication.
Sustained.
Did you author this document?
I did not author this document.
To the best of your knowledge, did any counsel person offer this document?
I, I do not know.
Who did you tell to author this document, the information contained in here that you had probable cause to remove Greg Smith from office?
Objection to the extent that that seeks conversations with counsel.
Sustained.
When was the decision made to hire Reminger as special prosecutor for the removal of Greg Smith?
I don't recall the exact date prior to the first proceeding.
Maybe Resolution 2246 will refresh your recollection?
I don't know. I don't have it in front of me. I'm not gonna.
Okay, well, may I approach?
Sure.
Does that refresh your recollection as to the date that Mr. Casson's firm was hired by counsel to represent prosecution of Mr. Greg Smith's removal?
Well, I'm fairly confident that we actually hired them prior and appointed them prior to the first hearing that we had, which would be before August 23rd.
First, the first hearing of what?
Removal of Mr. Smith.
So you hired Mr. Casson's firm prior to the February 19th, 2021, hearing of his first removal?
Objection. Don't answer it. It's attorney-client privilege. You're not gonna ask him conversations with me. You're not gonna ask him questions about his retention of me.
I'm not asking.
That's not relevant as well.
Sustained. Let's move on.
I'm not asking whether or not he had any conversations or anything at all.
Let's move on.
About whether or not Mr. Casson, or any conversations you had with him. I'm asking you about the public record of this counsel in hiring Mr. Casson's firm. As a matter of public record, did that happen prior to February 19th, 2021?
I don't recall what the date was. I just told you that we, I know that we hired him prior to this proceeding. We have appointed special counsel, which would be his firm.
Special counsel to do what?
To represent us in our removal proceeding of Mr. Smith.
And you've seen Resolution 2246, correct?
I have seen it, yes.
Okay. And you have no reason to doubt the authenticity of 2246 in the resolution hiring Mr. Counsel's, Mr. Casson's firm, Reminger, to prosecute the action, correct?
Objection. Relevance.
Sustained. Let's move on with this.
Let me make this clear, Dan. The notice had in there an hour limitation, which they're not gonna enforce, but the reason that it was in there is that the last hearing, you tilted the windows just like this, asking stuff that had nothing to do with the hearing.
Mr. Casson, if you want to testify, if you want to testify, sir, would you please ask, would you please ask?
Order. Turn around.
Don't, don't tell me, don't.
I can tell you. You need to let him speak. Stop. Let him speak.
They're gonna let you go on as long as you need, but you ought to make an effort to make it remotely relevant. For the, okay? Remotely relevant, okay? They'll let you go on as long as you want, as long as you keep it remotely relevant. That's what I'm telling you.
Where did you sign this document?
Objection. Relevance.
Sustained.
You are aware, according to the city charter, that you first have to ask the city prosecutor, or the county prosecutor, to prosecute this action for the removal of Mr. Smith, and if county prosecutor denies that action, then you then can request the appointment of special counsel, correct?
Correct.
When did counsel request the county prosecutor to prosecute this action?
Objection. That is a specific question that goes to a communication between counsel and their lawyer, specifically seeking attorney-client communication, and it's not relevant.
It is not. It is not.
Sustained.
Do you have to follow the law regarding the requests that are within the charter to appoint counsel?
Objection. Not a lawyer. Sustained. A fact witness.
Do you have to follow the charter?
Yes.
Okay. And regarding following the charter, the charter is plain on its face that it requires the county prosecutor to be contacted to prosecute the action, and if the prosecutor denies that, you can then hire someone else, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And that resolution says the county prosecutor has refused to accept responsibility of prosecuting the removal proceedings. Correct?
You just read it. I believe so.
Where did that information come from?
Me?
You? All right. When was that information communicated to you?
Objection.
Sustained. Sustained.
The requirement that the prosecutor be contacted and refuse is a requirement that precedes the authority to hire Mr. Reminger's firm, correct?
Objection. Sustained.
You can't hire, you can't hire a special prosecutor unless you ask the prosecutor first, right?
Objection. Not a lawyer. Ask him legal questions. You can make the legal arguments you want. He's not a lawyer. Ask him fact questions.
Is there any communications that exist to the prosecutor's office requesting the prosecutor prosecute this action for the removal for the notice that was served on August 16th?
Objection. He's asking for communication between counsel and their lawyer, which is the prosecutor, attorney-client communication.
Sustained.
Before you, you contact the, well, let me ask you this. How would, how would counsel go about contacting prosecutor to prosecute this action? How do you go about doing that?
I would presume that we would either have our council president or our city manager contact. Not one individual council member would, but potentially the president acting on behalf of counsel or our city manager acting for the city.
Well, don't you have to pass a resolution for an ordinance in order to communicate the requests of counsel to another agency?
Objection. You're asking a legal conclusion. He's a fact witness. He is not.
Sustained.
I'm asking you whether or not you, as a counsel person, know what you're required to do. Do you?
It would be probably through some guidance of our city attorney.
Were you represented by a city attorney on August 16th, 2021?
You mean, did we have a city attorney?
Did you have a city attorney on August 16th, 2021?
Sure, we had a city attorney.
Who was it?
I don't recall who at that point it was. There's a change in that, so I don't recall the date of the change.
You turn your attention to exhibit number one. And on the, charging parties number one. And on the fourth page of that exhibit, there's a letter there. Can you see that letter?
I believe the, was it the fourth page?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you see that letter?
I do.
Okay. Now, the documents that precede this letter are a public records request that I requested of the county prosecutor's office. And turning to page one of the exhibit where it says, "Would you please be so kind as to provide any written request or document memorializing a verbal request from the city of Nelsonville to the office of the prosecutor, requesting that the prosecutor serve as the prosecuting officer for the removal proceedings of Mr. Greg Smith from City Council of Nelsonville for a period of 1/121 to the date of your response? If any document is received after the date of your response that meets the specifications of this request, please consider this request as applicable to any document received hereafter." Have I read that correctly?
Yes.
Now, on the next page, this is a document dated August 22nd, 2021. It is Kim Willhout. I'm sorry, Witham, prosecutor's office, says, "Ms. Witham, after reading your response, it occurred to me I need to make another supplemental request. In addition to the original request, please provide any written response by the prosecutor made to any request or document memorializing a verbal request from the city of Nelsonville to the office of prosecutor, requesting that the prosecutor serve as the prosecuting officer for the removal proceedings of Mr. Greg Smith from the city council of Nelsonville for the period 1/121 to the date of your response." Have I read that correctly?
I believe so. What was the date you said it was?
At the very top, it says August 25th, 2021.
Yes, I thought, I thought you said the 22nd. I just wanna make sure I was reading the right one.
On the next page, it is August 25th, at 2:16, that's approximately four hours later from 10:25 that same day. Says, "Mr. Close, record attached for your request." And the attachment is the letter that we have dated March 8, 2021. See that?
I do see that.
So, this is the only letter that the prosecutor's office has provided to me as a public document that they have received from city council or council's representative or council's attorney from 1/121 until August 25th regarding contacting their office to prosecute this case. Would you agree that that is the information they provided?
It appears that way, yeah.
So, when did communication to the office of the prosecutor occur?
I'm not aware.
When did counsel authorize, as required by your charter, a resolution to contact the prosecutor's office to prosecute this case?
I don't recall the date.
Was there, was there a request made to the prosecutor's office?
Well, there must have been at least one, because you have a document here stating that.
This document is dated March 8, 2021. On March 8, 2021.
I'm just answering your question, sir.
I'm talking about the removal of August 16th. On August 16th, where is the removal request from city council to the prosecutor's office requesting that the prosecutor prosecute this action?
I don't remember.
You're required to do that, are you not?
Objection. Legal conclusion.
Sustained.
But do you remember doing it?
I don't remember doing it, no. I don't remember ever dismissing our special counsel from the initial, you know, appointment. I've.
The initial appointment to do what?
What you're asking me to do.
I'm asking you about August 16th, 2021. That is the third removal notice that was sent.
And I don't know where that notice is.
Was there ever an ordinance or resolution passed? To the best of your knowledge, ever a resolution or ordinance passed requesting the Athens County prosecutor to prosecute this action?
I don't recall if there specifically was.
If there was, would it be part of the public record?
It would be, yes.
And if it's not part of the public record, do you have authority to hire Mr. Casson's firm?
Objection. Legal conclusion. He's not a lawyer.
Correct. He is not an attorney.
The charter does require that. It does say that, doesn't it? That's plain language in the charter.
Says what? You want me to answer a question that isn't answered? What is the charter? What does the charter state?
We'll stipulate that the charter says what it says, if that'll help you move it along there.
Prior to the meeting of August 23rd, 2021 regarding hiring Mr. Casson's firm, was there a conference with among council members prior to that meeting?
What do you mean, uh?
Do you know, do you know whether there was a, there was a council, whether there was a conference or not?
Among council members or with our council? What are you referring to?
Do you know whether or not there was, there was a council meeting or a conference prior to the special meeting to appoint Mr. Casson's firm?
That's, I don't even understand that. That is...
Okay, I'll rephrase. On August 23rd, 2021...
The date at which we adopted that resolution of what you're stating, correct?
Yes. Do you remember that?
You showed it to me, yes.
Okay. And prior to that meeting occurring on, at 7:00 PM, was there, was there anyone present here before then discussing any matters?
If we, where we, we were in a public meeting. Are you asking if, were we meeting council members together outside of a public meeting? Is that what you're asking? I'm just asking for clarity, sir.
Did Mr. Sherman just make a comment to you?
He did not.
He didn't say anything to you at all?
Actually, he did not.
What did he know before he came to you?
I'm talking gibberish.
I think he was, I think he was mocking.
Mr. President, if you would, please request that people who are not sworn and giving testimony refrain from communicating with the witness. Would you please do that comment?
Dan, everyone, please leave the witness alone.
The arrangement for the hire of Mr. Reminger's firm, was that, uh... That require a contract or services to be paid to Mr. Reminger, or to Reminger?
If we contracted, if we appoint them, then yes, it would be compensated. Is that your question?
No.
Okay.
My question is, is, is there a contract for Reminger for city council, I'll rephrase, for city council to pay Reminger a fee for representing counsel to prosecute this action?
I'm unaware if there's an actual contract.
Does Reminger and Reminger expect to be paid for their services?
Objection. Relevance. I...
Sustained.
And the relevance is that you have enacted a resolution. A resolution that was voted upon by four individuals. A ordinance is required when there is an assumption of indebtedness. The fifth person to vote at the council meeting did so electronically, and electronic voting is no longer permitted under the House bill that expired in July. So therefore, we only have four votes regarding the hiring of Mr. Casson's firm, Reminger. If in fact, that is for the expenditure and creation of indebtedness. There was no motion to suspend the rules in this resolution, and lack of ordinance means that there's no contractual relationship with Mr. Casson's firm, Reminger, to represent you, and therefore, this entire proceeding is illegal. That's the relevance.
That's a great argument, but the point is you haven't established that I'm billing them for my services.
That's what I'm asking him.
And it's irrelevant. That wasn't a question you just asked me. That was a statement.
I did, he asked about whether it's relevant or not. I told you what the relevance is.
Objection over. Sustained.
Okay, so, so, is city council obliged to pay Mr. Reminger's firm for representing him?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Have you ever walked into a lawyer's office and asked him to do work for you?
Absolutely.
And did that lawyer tell you that, you know, there's a fee associated with this?
In my instances, yes.
Okay. Did Mr. Reminger's firm ever communicate to council that there would be a fee involved with representing him?
You're asking me if I know that he's mentioned that there's a fee involved to any other council member or just myself.
With regard to counsel, he can't communicate with you according to the charter. The communications between you and Mr. Casson representing Reminger, that has to occur between all of you, correct?
Look, he's already told us he doesn't know whether I'm going to bill counsel. You're asking him for something he doesn't have personal knowledge of, or he's already told us he doesn't.
I'm not asking him what he's going to bill. I'm going to ask him if, if...
We're moving on?
If you are to bill.
Danny told you to move on to a new topic.
Yes, we're done with this topic. Move on to the next.
So, it's my understanding that you have no recollection from any actions of counsel whether or not Mr. Reminger has provided information regarding whether...
Counselor, am I not clear? Did I just not say move on from this topic? Is you, I'm speaking English, so, I mean, it's very clear. Let's move on.
Was there an ordinance or resolution passed to have a special prosecutor appointed for the first removal?
I don't recall if there was from the first proceeding.
Do you recall whether or not in the first proceeding, the county prosecutor's office was contacted and declined to represent the council to prosecute the action?
I can't verify it. I can't say for certain.
In the resolution, 2246, it states that the county prosecutor refused to accept responsibility of that, and as I recall the video of this, you know, that was language that was spoken by Mr. Dunphy. Do you recall that?
I'm sorry, I got distracted by the, can you repeat the question, please?
Sure. Says, "Whereas the county prosecutor has refused to accept responsibility of prosecuting the removal proceedings," as I watched the video of this, that language appeared to have been spoken by Mr. Dunphy. Am I correct?
You watched the video, I didn't, so I assume you're correct. You just read it from there, though.
You were pre, were you present at this meeting?
I was present at the meeting.
Okay, do you recall Mr. Dunphy saying that the prosecutor had been contacted and has refused to accept responsibility of removal proceedings?
I do not recall Mr. Dunphy specifically stating that.
Now, in your notice for removal, which is charging parties, exhibit three, if you would look at where it says, "Each member of council shall continue to be a resident and qualified elector of the city throughout his term of office, failing which council shall remove him from office." Do you see that?
Oh, paragraph two you're reading?
Yes.
See that?
Okay, that's in italics. Do you see that?
I do see that.
Okay, what's the significance of that being in italics?
I don't know. How would I know that?
Did you author this document?
You already asked that question. I told you I did not.
Somebody else did, and they put this in italics, correct?
If I didn't author it, then somebody else did author it.
And when they put this in italics, what did that mean to you? You've, you've read it and you signed it, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay, what, what does that in italics mean to you?
Well, it means that that is in italics.
Is the sole charge that Mr. Smith is being charged with relate to being a, "Continue to be a resident and qualified elector throughout the term of office, failing which council shall remove him from office?" Is that the sole allegation regarding the conduct for his removal?
The sole charge is that he is not a continuous resident. Not that, it has nothing to do with qualified elector. It solely to do with continuous residence.
So, you're not, you're not deciding that he's not a qualified elector and therefore should be removed, correct?
We're not.
It's solely because of his continuing to be a resident portion, correct?
At the time of election and throughout his term, correct?
So, this only relates back to conduct after his election? So, you're only concerned about his continuing to be a resident after his election?
His continuous residence is what we're concerned about, have been concerned about. He has to be continued residence to be an official here.
After he was elected.
To be, to be elected.
That's not what it says here, though.
Okay, you read what it says.
Each, each member of council shall continue to be a resident. That means he was elected to be a council person, correct?
He was elected.
Okay, and so, after he was elected, all of the conduct you're referring to that he has failed to be a resident, continue to be a resident. That's all after he was elected.
Objection speaks for itself when we write half the quote.
Sustained.
The whole section is cited there. You're reading half the quote.
Let me, let me, let me read the whole quote section. So, there's no misunderstanding here. "Each member of council..." That means Mr. Smith, correct? He's a member, he's a member of council.
That would be every member of council.
"...shall continue to be a resident."
Continue to be a resident, yep.
That would mean after the election, correct?
Objection, again, that's not where the quote starts. The quote starts two lines above. He said you're reading the whole thing.
I'm talking about what's in italics. "Any qualified elector who has been continuously a resident and a qualified elector of the city for one year, next prior to their election, and who is not the occupant of an incompatible office, shall be eligible to serve as a member of city council." In italics, "Each member of council shall continue to be a resident and qualified elector of the city throughout his term of office, failing which council shall remove him from office." Have I read that correctly?
You have.
Okay. You're not contesting that Mr. Greg Smith is not a qualified elector, are you? As a charging official?
Objection has been answered.
Sustained.
You are, you are, however, contesting that he is failed to continue to be a resident. That is the charge, correct?
Objection. The charter speaks for itself, and it specifically says, "Fail to possess or maintain a qualified position of office."
Sustained.
Under the definition of "shall continue to be a resident," is a council member permitted to leave the city of Nelsonville for a day and still be considered as continuously residing in Nelsonville?
Objection. As for legal conclusion.
Sustained. He's not an attorney.
You, you have decided that there were facts in determining whether or not there's probable cause to remove him from office, did you not?
Correct.
And as part of those facts, you determined that he violated the provision that requires him to be a, continuously a resident, correct?
Correct.
Okay, what does continuously be a resident mean?
Objection. You're asking for a legal conclusion. Dan, just ask him what his understanding of it is. That's the proper way to ask the question. Ask him that, I won't object.
Mr. Casson just asked the question. He told me how to ask it. I'll just defer to him.
I just probably did a non-objection away to ask that question.
What is it that you're, what's the question?
What's your understanding of what continuously be a resident means?
Uninterrupted, I wrote this down, so I wouldn't forget it, because I thought this would come up. Uninterrupted, unbroken, not intermittent or occasional, so persistently repeated at short intervals as to constitute virtually an unbroken series. That was a definition that I pulled off the internet.
Where on the internet did you get that definition?
I have a link that I can provide you.
Okay, give me the link.
I'll make you a copy of it. It's right there. It's pretty long.
Did that come from a, a treatise or law dictionary?
Law dictionary.
Law dictionary? Was that Black's Law Dictionary?
It doesn't say on it.
Have you ever heard of Black's Law Dictionary? Is that particular definition that you've recited contained in the charter?
No.
Have you ever presented that definition to any council member to advise them that that's the definition to be continuously a resident?
I have not.
Has anyone at council ever presented that to any council member that that's the definition to continue to be a resident?
No, I searched this on the internet with Mr. Casson.
Well, given your definition that you have there, would a council member being absent for a week at a time and then returning for a day be a violation of that?
Where's the council member been? Well, I don't know. You're asking me a very vague question. If, if somebody continues, here's a common sense way I look at it. If a person lives here, they return home every night asleep. If they're gone for three or more days, they're probably on a weekend getaway or a vacation, or they're out of town for business. And I, that's a common sense of way I would look at continuous resident.
Have you ever taken a vacation?
I have.
How long, how, how long have you taken vacations for?
Seems a little personal, but okay. I mean, it's, I've been on a free day, you know, camping for the weekend or a week-long vacation with the family.
Have you communicated that definition to fellow members of council regarding that's the standard they are to apply when considering the evidence you presented?
I have not.
If you take a look at exhibit 21... On page three of four, first column, beginning the second paragraph as mentioned above. Do you see that?
Page three of four, second column.
First column.
First column, okay.
As mentioned above.
Exhibit 21, you said?
Exhibit 21.
Where are you at? You mean where you-
Page three of four.
Were you got it highlighted?
Yes.
Okay.
Beginning with, "The concept of residency is not defined anywhere in the statute or municipal ordinance." Do you see that?
Just so we're clear, you're asking a fact witness to read in legal decision from a criminal case.
I'm asking him to read information that contains a definition.
Okay, so we're starting with Black's Law. Is that where you're referring?
No, it says, "The concept of residency is not defined anywhere in either the statute or the municipal ordinance." Have I read that correctly?
I don't, I don't know where you're at, sir. Where are you at?
In the paragraph that begins as mentioned above.
Okay. All right, where would you like me to start?
Where it says, "The concept of," and then there's asterisk five. You see that?
Okay, I see that.
"Residency is not defined anywhere in either the statute or the municipal ordinance." See that?
I do.
I've read that correctly?
You have.
Okay. Is residency defined in the city charter of Nelsonville?
I don't believe that it is.
Okay. Is there any municipal ordinance in which residency is defined?
Not to my knowledge.
Is continuously defined in the city charter of Nelsonville?
I don't believe so.
How about, is continuously designed, defined in any municipal ordinance of the city of Nelsonville?
Not to my knowledge.
Continuing on, however, the term reside generally means to remain or to stay or to dwell permanently or continuously, and that's in quotes. And then after that's Black's Law Dictionary 1979 at page 1176. Do you see that?
I do, I do see that, yeah.
Okay. What is your understanding of what Black's Law Dictionary is in the legal world?
What is my understanding of the-
Of Black's, Black's Law Dictionary. What is it in the legal world? Is it an authoritative source?
I have no idea. Why would I know that? I'm not an attorney. I wouldn't know if that is.
Well, you weren't an attorney, and you looked something up on the internet regarding a definition, correct?
I didn't know you needed to be an attorney to look something up on the internet.
But you had, you, you looked it up, right?
Sure, I did look it up.
And you looked in a, in a legal dictionary to find that, correct?
Well, it was one of the sources, sure.
Okay, so you considered that to be a, a legal source and an authoritative legal source, correct?
I, what I actually believe it to be is the definition is all I put forward.
Okay, well, you, you believe it to be an authoritative legal source.
Objection. He just-
Sustained. He's answered the question.
Do you believe it to be authoritative?
Objection. He, he answered the question. He may not have answered it the way he wanted to. He answered it.
Did you research?
Why would you define it as authoritative? I'm just asking. What is the significance there?
I get to ask the questions. Sorry. I'd like to have a dialogue.
Okay, I'm just trying to get clarity.
Mr. Castle will just object. I'll, I'll pee you on that. So the only thing I'd like to know from you is, what research did you do to determine whether or not this was an authoritative source?
I didn't determine whether it was authoritative. That's your words.
Do you, do you believe that the document that you looked at is an authoritative source of a legal definition of continuous?
I believe it to be a definition, not necessarily legal. I didn't say that. That's your words.
He's already, he's already answered the question, sustained, several times.
Were you aware that Ohio law, in this particular case that we have here, that it says, under this definition citing Black's Law Dictionary, it says, "Periodic visits with another, whether or not they are overnight, no matter how frequent, will not rise to the level necessary to meet the statutory requirements of reside." Are you aware of that?
Objection to the extent that it sounds as a law. You can ask him whether or not he goes up.
Were you aware that that's another definition?
I'm not aware of that definition.
Okay, five-minute recess. Let's use the bathroom real quick. Everybody?
I did see trucks, but I don't know if it's up for me or if it's, it sounds like they won't shut off. I don't think any of those, unless they've done work up there and put one in.
Where at?
They did put one at the bottom of the hill.
When Dixon redid that?
It says, it sounds like it's coming from the water, where the water is.
It's got the old-
I should pay bill.
A little more water.
So I found that you talked about it. I've got to get a hold of the right one. It's announced from a rec. meeting, and, uh-
Did you find it?
No, it was buried in old emails. It was a one email. So it just said, "Who talked about it?" So I have enough contacts I can start calling around and asking.
Oh, I'm sure. Should be Anna.
That's good. You're correct.
Okay, everyone back? Ready to continue? Okay, we're back on. Counselor-
I think I know the person, if I could. Okay, just for the record, I mean, I think quite a bit of leeway to get in on cross here. And if it doesn't come back to some semblance or relevance, I'm going to request that a one occasion be put on, the one that's timed as the process witness. I think an hour and a half or so, whatever it's been, is the point we need.
Okay. Wish thirty minutes would be acceptable?
Well, I'm, I'm not making a request now. I may make it if it doesn't kind of draw back.
All right, let's go. Counselor, floor's yours.
Regarding the charge that you made against Mr. Smith for his removal that he failed to continuously be a resident, what's the minimum amount of time that a person serving as a council member has to be away from the city of Nelsonville not to have been considered having continuously been a resident according to your definition?
I don't think I date, stated a specific amount of time. I think my definition is pretty clear.
I'm asking you that question. What's the specific amount of time that a person serving as a council member has to be away from the city of Nelsonville not to be considered having been continuously a resident according to your definition?
Objection. Asking for a legal conclusion about notice.
Correct. Sustained. He's not an attorney.
Do you expect people to follow the rules regarding being elected council members and then continuously residing in Nelsonville as a council member?
I do.
Okay, as part of doing that, continuing to continuously reside, they have to know what continuously reside means, don't they?
Objection. Asking for a legal conclusion.
Sustained.
Dan, you can make your arguments about whether it's legal or not legally. It's a legal issue, and you know it's a legal issue. What is personal beliefs on it has nothing to do with it. It's just something that's relevant.
The person who reads the charter, how would they know whether they're being continuously a resident or not?
You're asking me to answer for someone else read and how they're going to interpret the charter?
That's what the charter is there for, is for other people to read it besides you. Wouldn't you agree?
I would say anybody could read it, yes.
Okay. Well, when somebody else reads it, what would you expect them to glean from the charter as to what constitutes continuously being a resident?
Objection. Asking for a legal conclusion. He's already told you his understanding of what that means several times.
Sustained.
I'll take a break for my client.
Five minutes? Does that work?
Probably not. Take five minutes. Oh, wait, twice five.
Okay, go ahead.
Did you say five, or you wanted to do it quick, but it's about five?
Just about five minutes, maybe.
Is there any money yet?
Excuse me, sir.
Is there a water break in the city right now? They would say some guys go out. Oh, I thought it was your water.
I did too.
I didn't know if they did. I never-
I saw a truck. I saw a truck. I don't know if it-
Might have been Bruce's water plant. Yeah, I don't know.
Counselor, are you right, sir?
Yes.
Okay, all right. We're back at session. Go ahead, sir.
Do you know whether or not Mr. Greg Smith has been eliminated from receiving council notices by email?
I do not know.
Do you know whether or not he received notice to be here at this meeting tonight by email?
Uh, he was the one requested tonight.
I understand. Do you know whether he received notice by email to be here tonight?
I do not know if he received email. If I'm unaware of he receives email, then I would be unaware that he received email to be here tonight. But he requested tonight, so I know he's aware of it. If that's what you're crushing it.
Did you receive a notice to be here tonight?
It was in the newspaper.
Is that the only notice you received?
Um, I'm unaware. I don't know if I got a special meeting from, if it went over, that Dan Pfeiffer, you know, went, sent out a message. It was in the newspaper.
What, what does Dan Pfeiffer do?
He's a, he's a public information officer. He sends out, like, public notices on, through the county.
Okay. He's required to do that under law? Is that correct?
I don't know.
All right. There were documents that in the previous two hearings I introduced into evidence, and I've also shown you some of these, these documents, just to the extent that we go through these in a rather expeditious fashion to see if you recognize any of these documents from the past that I've introduced-
Okay.
-as being part of the record. We talked about exhibit one, correct?
Again, if this will speed it up, if you're doing this to admit them, you know, I think they can probably agree for the admission of them.
Okay.
It's not saying, I'm not going to like, if you want to submit whatever you want to submit, I'm not going to like, I don't think you have to, like, establish them with the witness, right? It's not evidentiary. That would save you time.
All right, so for the record, between the prosecution and myself-
Correct.
-we'll stipulate that the exhibits that I'm introducing are now part of the record.
This package, your charge party listed exhibits, exhibit four through twenty-four, I'm fine with that coming into the record and going wherever it may go.
Okay.
So nothing.
No further questions of this witness, but I would like to call Ms. Candy Park up to express.
Okay, one second. Let me see if I don't want to ask anything else. I do have one question. Can you take the charging party exhibits and go to exhibit nine, please? Okay.
We talked about exhibit one, correct?
Again, if this will speed it up, if you're doing this to admit them, you know, I think they can probably agree for the admission of them.
Okay.
It's not saying I'm not going to like, if you want to submit whatever you want to submit, I'm not going to like, I don't think you have to like establish them as a witness, right? Not of entry. That would save your time.
All right, so for the record, between the prosecution and myself.
Correct.
We'll stipulate that the exhibits that I'm introducing are now part of the record.
This packet, your charging party listed exhibits, exhibit four through twenty-four, I'm fine with that coming into the record and going wherever they go.
Great.
So nothing.
No further questions of this witness, but I would like to call Ms. Candy Parker, the president.
Okay. One second, let me see if I don't want to ask anything else. Yeah, I do have one question. Can you take the charging party exhibits? Go to exhibit nine, please. All right. You got exhibit nine?
I am.
It's a bank statement. See that?
Uh, yes.
All right. And you see up top, that's the Adams address?
Correct.
All right. When we were talking about Mr. Smith's daughter, correct?
Yes.
The daughter that he questioned you about whether she lived at the Adams Street address?
Correct.
All right. The bank statement here, do you see her name on that?
I do.
What's her name?
Andrea Ann Thompson.
And the bank statement stated January twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-one? That's correct. You're aware she lives somewhere else?
Correct.
All right. Go ahead, thank you.
Ms. Parker, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Your witness. Correct. You come up to the podium, understand? It'd be better if he stood at the podium. Thank you, ma'am.
Would you state your full name for the record, please?
Yes, sir.
And you have supplied an affidavit in this matter as exhibit number twenty-two. And then operates the witness.
Correct.
I'm going to show you that, that document and ask you if that's your affidavit.
Yes.
And prior to our dialogue right now, have I ever spoken to either of you? Yeah. We've heard some testimony here tonight regarding Mr. Smith, and we have an affidavit here from Ms. Teague Fisk regarding Mr. Smith's residency at two thirty Adams Street. You were here for that testament? Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. But just for the record, not to instruct you to answer in a particular way, by the nod of the head because we're being audible here, I would need you to respond either affirmatively or negatively, yes or no, and to do so rather than a ha or huh-uh, which can also be a little difficult to pick up on a recording. Do we agree to do that?
Thank you.
Thank you. How long have you known Mr. Greg Smith?
Me? I don't know life that I haven't known.
Okay. And do you know where he currently resides?
Yes.
Okay, where does he currently reside?
At two thirty whatever Street.
Have you been to that residence before?
Yes, I have.
Okay. Tell me about being there at that residence, the occasions you've been here.
Yeah, well, over the last six years, probably.
About over the last two years.
Yeah. I go there quite a bit.
Okay. And when you go there, who do you, who do you go to see?
Greg and Melanie.
Okay. And when you've gone there to see Greg or Melanie, has Greg always been there?
Yeah.
Okay. And has Melanie always been there?
Melanie's always been there.
Have you, have you been aware?
I'm aware, I'm aware, yeah. I have been there if Greg wasn't there and Melanie there.
Okay.
But most of the time, Greg is right there with Melanie.
Okay. And on, on those occasions, when you've been there over the last six years, did you ever find the house to be vacant in any manner?
No.
Okay. And every time that you went there, was somebody present?
Yes.
Okay. And was it, was Greg's daughter there?
Living there. She lived there for a little while. And then she, you know, she moved.
Okay. When did she move, do you recall?
About five years ago.
Okay. And do you recall why she moved?
Why she moved? Yeah, I think when she was going through her divorce, she moved in.
Okay.
And then she moved out.
Maybe that was more than two, three years ago.
Yes.
Okay. And have you had any conversations with Greg that would lead you to believe that he resides anywhere else?
I do not believe he lives in there. He lives up there. The CPAC machines there, his clothes are there. I fuss all the time about moving his socks. So I say, no mind, life has to carry on. But, yeah, he's there.
Have you had any conversations with his wife any complaints she has about him not being there or abandoning her or living somewhere else, things along those borders?
Nope.
Do you know Ms. Teague Fisk?
Yeah.
She says she drives up and down the street ten times per day from two thirty-eight Adams Street, don't care where she lives, and five thirty-seven Adams Street. That's about three blocks away, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Those times that you've been there, visiting with Mr. Smith, have you ever seen her drive by?
I have seen TJ drive.
Okay. And when she drove by, at the time you were there, Mr. Smith was present? Is that correct?
No, it's correct.
Okay. Was he driving a vehicle?
Yes.
Do you recall the last time that you saw Ms. Fisk drive by when Mr. Smith was present?
No. And the past summer, when I was pulling the rugs up. She goes by quite a bit. So I was there the whole time.
He was there doing work?
Yeah.
Okay, you said pulling the rugs up, what do you mean by that?
They had hardwood floor underneath their rug.
Okay.
And me and Melanie thought it's in our heads, we were going to pull the rugs up.
Okay.
And we started pulling them.
And Mr. Smith was there for that?
He was there for that.
Um, how about his daughter? Was she there?
No.
When was the last time you saw his daughter after that?
I have only one time seen Andrea in the last two years.
Okay. Do you recall that one?
No, no, I don't recall that. Been in the last probably six months or so. And it's been recently.
Okay. And she was there, was Mr. Smith there?
Yes.
Okay. And given do you ever socialize with the Smiths?
Yeah.
What do you do with them?
Hang out. When they come to my house, I go to their house, we go to eat.
Okay, and go out to restaurants together?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And after you're done at the restaurants, do you go home?
Do I go home?
Yes.
Sometimes. Sometimes I've gone back to their house.
Okay, and they, and Mr. Smith has gone back after being at the restaurant? Given your association with Mrs. Smith and your personal knowledge over the last six years, what is your understanding or your opinion of where Mr. Smith resides?
My opinion is that Mr. Smith resides on Adams Street.
Have you ever had him tell you that he resides anywhere else?
No.
Just give me just one. I have nothing further.
Okay, thank you. Um, you work for Mr. Smith?
Do I work for him? No.
Have you ever worked for him?
No.
Has he ever given you money for any reason? Just work for him or not?
No, but work for him.
Has he ever given you money for any other reason?
He gave me gas money one time.
And you're obviously friends with him?
Yeah.
Close friends?
On table cards.
Known him your whole life?
A many, my whole life.
All right. You gave an affidavit that is in the packet of information from the charging party. That is exhibit twenty-two, you recall doing that affidavit?
I signed an affidavit.
You signed that affidavit knowing that there was an issue with respect to his continuous residency here, correct?
Yes.
You signed that affidavit knowing that that was an issue, correct?
It's residency, it was, yes.
You didn't put anything in that affidavit that about his residency, did you?
That wasn't, that wasn't what I didn't ask.
And you've known him a long time, correct? You've known
I don't know life to what I haven't known.
Sure. You've known the jobs that he's had, correct?
Yeah.
You've known the interests that he's had, correct?
His interest, yes.
You've known the training that he's had, correct?
I don't know the strength, but I'm not know.
Have you ever heard of him having a job where he could care to say?
Yes.
Where's that?
Here, if he take care of, takes care of, he'll pay.
Sure. And prior to this thing with Ms. Tyson, in his entire professional career, did he have any type of position where his job was to take care of disabled folks?
No, if you're asking, I don't know.
To your knowledge, to your knowledge, does he have any education or training dealing with taking care of disabled folks?
I don't think that.
In your experience with him, prior to his relationship with Ms. Tyson, did he give any charity with respect to disabled folks?
I have no idea.
In your experience with him, prior to his relationship with Ms. Tyson, was he involved with any charities with respect to disabled folks?
I don't know. I was gone for twenty-one years. I moved back, back in the mode.
When did you move back?
Two thousand and four.
So in the last eighteen years, other than his relationship with Ms. Tyson, are you aware of him having any interest, any involvement with disabled folks?
I'm going to check, I'm going to check. Check irrelevance. Excuse me, excuse me, check irrelevancy.
Irrelevance is, it goes to Ms. Tyson's affidavit, which was submitted to the issue of somehow he's over there to take care of a disabled kid. He's got no, no experience, no training, no interest, nothing. Able kid his whole life, it goes to credibility of the affidavit.
Because the affidavit doesn't speak to anything regarding that. So whatever you want to infer from the affidavit, you can make an argument from that, but it's not evidence and you can't cross-examine her on something that doesn't exist.
Ms. Tyson's affidavit said that the relationship, the limited term taking care of a disabled child. The affidavit you submitted that, that's. So I'm attacking that affidavit and establishing that during his guy's whole life, he's not in any way shown any predilection to take care of disabled folks, be involved with them, or in any way have anything to do with disabled folks. It goes to the credibility of whether that's true or whether or not it's just actually her boyfriend.
That's irrelevant to where he resides. It's not relevant at all.
It's relevant to her credibility to the extent that she says he doesn't reside there. To your knowledge, anything with disabled folks prior to this relationship with Ms. Tyson?
No, not to my knowledge.
All right.
But I do know Ms. Tyson. And this bet, that's what you know, I recall.
All right, that's all I have, what do you think?
Okay. I'd like to redirect.
Sure. Go ahead.
You said you know Mr. Smith most of your life, correct?
Yes.
And do you consider Mr. Smith to be a caring individual?
Yes.
You consider him to be kind?
Yes.
Do you consider him to care about the welfare of others?
Yes.
Would it be any surprise to you that he would devote himself to the care of somebody who is challenged either physically or mentally?
Not at all.
And the first time you've ever seen that happen, where he's taken this kindness and he's taken this wonderful part of him and devoted it to the disabled kid, right?
No. I mean, I've seen him do other things.
Okay, that's all right.
Okay, one final point.
Go ahead, sir.
Have you seen him deal with other individuals in group settings, church, or meetings, or organizations of any kind?
He's, he's would always be the one that would take us and move us away from the meetings at church.
I see.
So he was always there, always part of.
Has he dealt with children or people that have challenges as part of a church membership?
I don't know that we've had any within the church. So growing up, Greg would be the one that would say, come on, guys, let's go do this. And we all had a one go with it. All right. Why the adults did, what the adults did.
So he exhibited, in your opinion, he exhibited care and concern for others?
Yes.
All right. No more evidence?
I have none, I was.
All right, closing arguments.
Sandy, you have any more?
No, I do none.
You want to put up?
I'll put a five-minute time limit on closing arguments.
I'm going to be much clearer.
Okay.
Now, I think when you evaluate credibility, we've got to make a credibility evaluation here. You're allowed to look at a couple of facts. You're allowed to look at the evidence in front of you, but you're also allowed to look at the evidence that's not in front of you. And the glaring piece of evidence that's not in front of you is any testimony underwrote from Mr. Smith. Right? There's three people who have submitted, there's two, there's two people who have submitted affidavits who claim to have known where he's been at night and where he resides at night and stays permanently. Brittany's affidavit says that it's outside juror's station. It's consistent with the White Pages, it's consistent with what the neighbor said, it's consistent with what's generally known. All right? The only other person who would actually know and be there is Memphis Smith. When you look at her affidavit, it was a dodge. She says it. I think he always intends to come back here, right? So who, who wants you here from? If he continually resided, who wants you here from? Mr. Smith. But you didn't. And I think when you resolve the credibility of this, you've got the affidavit from the wife where he's dodging, you've got Brittany's affidavit where she just takes it directly on, you should ask yourself, why didn't he testify under oath? Why did he get up here and say, this is ridiculous? Of course I went here, of course I go here. Of course this is my intent, personal, where I intend to reside. He didn't. And you ought to consider that in resolving the credibility of this. The one person who's got the most skin in the game here, the one person who's got the most incentive to step up and tell you, made a decision not to testify under oath, made a decision not to be cross-examined, made a decision not to submit an affidavit. Right? If you had to break any tie in credibility, that would break the tie. Thank you.
Floor is yours, sir.
The information that we have, we consider as a matter of evidence, and I'll kind of reverse step here a little bit. Mr. Smith's decision as to whether or not he testifies is not generally something that is not generally something that is considered because he has decided to allow the law to take its steps. The burden of proof regarding the evidence is upon the charging official. That evidence is a matter of record. If you want to talk about a dodge, with the exception of one witness who was subpoenaed here at the first hearing, none of the individuals who are subject to subpoena power of this body have been subpoenaed here to testify. That's quite clear why they're not here to testify, is they would be subject to cross-examination. So the same reasoning applies to them. Now, that's not something that you can turn away lightly because Brittany Tyson is a convicted felon. It was convicted of falsification of a document to implicate others. That's the information that was solicited from her, even though it's clear that the evidence was provided at previous hearing that she is a convicted felon. And the other evidence that was provided regarding her testimony and that of her boyfriend and/or husband that was provided, it's not taken under oath, it's a rambling mess of notes that contains no substance whatsoever, it's not reliable, it's not proven, it's not substantial. And they were subject to testimony, they were subject to subpoena, they weren't subpoenaed. There was no other information brought before this council by anyone. Nobody who is associated with counsel has come forward to give any other testimony regarding this matter. The comments that this is generally known or known is completely unsupported. Mr. Casson's comments in that regard can only be considered whether or not it's a comment on the evidence, his testimony is not evidence. His closing arguments are not evidence, closing arguments are never evidence, and opening arguments are never evidence. It is the summation of what that evidence concludes. We have heard a person who came in, not under subpoena, but at request, who I have never met before in my life. And Ms. Parker testified that she's known Greg Smith all of her life. She's been there to his residence many times. She's socialized with him and his wife Melanie. And they are good friends, they have been for a long time. You know, the old adage is, you know, I have a busload of nuns here to testify, except that busloads of nuns usually don't drive by Mr. Smith's residence. We have to take who drives by and who's there, you know, as they do this. But we do have Ms. Candy Parker. And you've heard her, you've heard what she had to say about where Mr. Smith lives, what kind of individual he is, and the fact that he takes care of an individual who suffers from mental disabilities. Now, that's not illegal, and it's not a violation of the charter for him to go there periodically to take care of her and then return to his residence. The information that his wife provided in an affidavit, which is under oath, and the presumption of being under oath is that it's true, is that he lives there, he's always lived there. They maintain that house there together, and he always intends to return. Having said that, is there some evidence that's been presented here that one might be able to, if one distilled it far enough down, maybe think that there's something else going on here? Possible, anything's possible. What the evidence actually shows is Mr. Smith lives at 238 Adams Street. All the substantial evidence, all the documentary evidence shows that he lives at 238 Adams Street. No one has shown him living anywhere else, nobody has established he has any other residence. Nobody has established that he goes anywhere else and lives there on a consistent basis. At best, at best, it is an intermittent out-of-town experience, and he's allowed to do that because there's no consistency in application of the definition that Mr. Taylor has provided. His definition, in his own words, accounts for no specific time whatsoever. You can't hold somebody in violation of a standard when you have not established that standard to a certainty that ordinary people would understand. What he read, ordinary people wouldn't understand. Greg Smith is a resident of 238 Adams Street for the purposes of this hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
What I would suggest you consider doing is having whatever debate you feel appropriate.
Okay.
Taking a vote, and once you have your vote, you may consider, set a special meeting for Dr. Ripford and Ravello, you know, to be prepared along the lines of your vote. That's what I would suggest you do, whatever debate you want here. Everybody speak your mind.
Okay.
All right. On the statement of T.G. Fisk, do you guys see, is she a credible person or uncredible?
T.G.'s a business owner, I've never heard she... I've known her several years since I've lived here. I have never known T.G. to be anything but a business owner.
Okay. Well, I I think that seems like every affidavit is untrue other than Mr. Smith's, he's an affidavit. The big argument here was terminology. Not his residency, the whole defense was terminology. So I don't discredit any of these affidavits. You know, his wife's wording of he often returns home. And I'm sorry, I've been by the residence a lot of times to clear my own conscience, and I've never seen him there, but one residence I did see in Mattel's Waterford. Excuse me. Where I'm objection to that, that's testimony that comes, that he's testified as a witness.
He's not testifying, he's not under oath. He's just stating opinions.
This is...